Let's call this meeting in order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome to this edition of the Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to remind everybody that this is a public meeting and we are being recorded of both audio and visually. And when you come to the microphone to speak, please state your name and your address into the microphone at the podium. Words and recognitions, I have one. Do you have one too?
I do not.
Do you have one?
No.
Okay.
Assuming you're doing the letter.
I'm doing the letter, right here. I actually have that. So this is a, actually, I have two, actually. I don't think the other one was printed up, but I have, and the first one is for LG Bullock, and I don't think he made it, did he Tom?
Busy.
Busy, yep. So, this is regarding heroes of the flood on the Walla Walla River Road. To whom it may concern, I know there are many heroes who gave their all to help their community during the recent floods. I want to point out one who probably does not want the attention, yep, she's correct, but I witnessed his incredibly hard and efficient work, and his employer deserves to know about it. I live at the corner of Cash Hollow Road and Walla Walla River Road, just beyond the huge washout created by the new course of the river at that location. My pastures and fencing were washed out, as was the road. Residents were required to use the Cash Hollow detour for many days and were grateful for it, but that detour, when rain soaked, is unsafe for many vehicles, and the rain was about to return. From my window, I saw a front loader backhoe operator working until the sundown, until it was simply too dark to see any longer, tearing up the ruined blacktop at the washout and making way for the dump trucks to start filling the huge gaps in the road. The operator, who turned out to be LG Bullock, ran that machine at lightning speed and with amazing skill hour after hour. He absolutely did not waste a single second that night, which I think was Thursday, February 13th. I very much wanted to know who he was, so that next morning, he was back doing the very same thing at the same speed and efficiency. I walked over and waved at him and asked him his name. Along with that, he also said he thought he would have the road passable "this week", in quotes. That was good news, but in fact, I think it was usable the very next day, as dump truck after dump truck brought Brock fill and other equipment turned the washout into a rough road. Mr. Bullock did the work of three people and two machines with great skill and commitment to helping the people stranded by the flooding, some of whom may have had four wheeled, may not have had four wheeled our vehicles capable of using the detour. It might seem like a little thing, but it meant so much at the time, especially when the Bullock family writ large suffered such devastating losses from the flooding upriver at the same time. We are all indebted to him, as well as the other heroes of the flood. I happened to watch this one up close and personal, and I was just overwhelmed by the dedication and selflessness of this man. So, congratulations to LG Bullock. And then I also received a letter from, a thank you card, and this was, actually came in, and you don't have this yet, Melinda, so, there's, this one says, "Sir, thank you for working so hard to fix all this damage. I know my husband already talked with you. Our dad, who recently passed away, made those corrals for our family. He wanted it to be easier on us so that we would never need to replace them. When we saw the damage, we all cried, Mom included. Although we haven't lost what others have, I was, it was the memory of Dad trying to get so much done for us. It would be easier on the boys and myself when Daddy was at work. He always was worrying about my arms, and I am a breast cancer survivor. Thank you for the work that you are doing." Signed, The Weathers. And there's a whole bunch of people that signed that. So, that goes out to our road department. So, again, a lot of people doing a lot of things, and congratulations to LG and the road department for your guys' hard work." Okay, acknowledgement of the minutes, February 19th and the 24th, we have two of them.
Vote for adoption.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any additions to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Any public input or recognition of visitors that's not on the agenda today? Okay. Business item. The first item of business is the City of Ordinance co-adoption land use hearing. So, we'll need to go out of public meeting mode and go into hearing, and while I read the opening statement. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is John Schaefer. I'm the chairman of the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning the City of Hermiston's request for the county to co-adopt City Ordinance 2289, amending the comprehensive plan map from urbanizable to urban status for several tracts of land currently located in the urban growth area of the City of Hermiston. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application, then any persons in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. If there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. The commissioners also may ask the staff and witnesses questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please come forward and begin your testimony by clearly stating your name and your address. If you represent somebody else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents, or physical evidence, please hand it to me or the staff, and it will be marked as part of the record. Are there any questions? So, Plan Map Amendment Number P 125-19, co-adopt City of Hermiston's Ordinance 2289. The City of Hermiston's requesting this county co-adopt City Ordinance, oh, we already talked about that, 2289, amending the comprehensive plan map for urbanizable to urban status for a 7.5 acre tract located at the southeast corner of northeast 10th Street and east Elm Avenue, a 1.98 acre tract located at the southeast corner of East Diagonal Boulevard and east Elm Avenue, and a 31.32 acre tract located north of East Diagonal Boulevard, east of northeast 10th Street, and south of east Elm Avenue. The city council also adopted ordinance 2290 and annexing said property effective upon co-adoption of ordinance 2289. The criteria of approval are found in UCDC 152.750 and 152.754, and the joint management agreement between the city and the county.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. Bob Walder, Planning Director. Commissioner Schaefer gave a pretty good overview of where this property is located. Doug, if you go to the next exhibit, there should be a map, if you scroll down. Yeah, if, go down one more, I believe there's, oh, that might have been it. So...
Oh, wait, is that it, Bob?
Yeah, that kind of gives you an idea of the area we're looking at, they're near Diagonal Road. But what this involves is, you might recall, we've done a few of these the past few years, as City of Hermiston has a unique provision in their code that requires the county to co-adopt changes to amendments to their comprehensive plan when things are going from being converted from urbanizable to urban status. And then, so the city approves those changes through ordinance, and then the county is required to co-adopt that change from urbanizable to urban. And then, the city would then annex it in upon that co-adoption. So, those provisions are found in our joint management agreement with the city. The Hermiston City Council held a public hearing on November 25th and approved the plan amendment, and then subsequently adopted ordinance 2289 and 2290. And the Yumitilla Planning Commission met last month on February 27th and unanimously recommended approval of the applicant's request, and so now it's before you to co-adopt those changes. I believe the applicant is here, so if you have any questions about the proposal or the proposed land use out there, would be a good time to ask them. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant please come up to the microphone?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lloyd Piercy, 33927 Riverview Road in Hermiston, Oregon. Okay, first thing I noticed, you misspelled my name, or someone did on the top of the sheet. But at any rate, I'm sure that's going to be fixable. So, the project that we're proposing is a multi-use planned neighborhood, and it will also anchor the entrance to the town from the east side, which now you just sort of drive into the back end of Hermiston, and it sort of starts, and it's a little cluttery. And the City of Hermiston was rather excited to have a sign there and a planned community and a nice development for that entrance into town. The small portion you see on the east side will be commercial, and it's, as you see, it's right next to the Field of Dreams Ball Field. So, that could be served by a small mini-market or some kind of taqueria, who knows what kind of commercial venture would be able to serve those areas and the community. To the, to the south of our proposed development, there is, there are two schools, and to the north, there's a new school plan. So, this is going to be really integral for people that want to have families and live closest to the schools. This area will also serve, there's another housing district directly to the south that's already developed, Monty Vista Homes. So, there's several hundred homes there. So, we included in our vision here, on the west side of the property, there's a 10th Street, and it is a bit of a bottleneck for walkers and pedestrian traffic, because it's, it has specific power poles on one side and UEC power on the other side, and Hermiston irrigation ditch with a burec ditch there. So, it's a bit of a problem for them to be able to expand this. And this is kind of where this discussion with the city started, was I was working with Larry Fitterer, saying, well, let's donate some ground on the, on our property for a walking path, so that we, because I just was, as I've traveled this in the winter and the fog and ice, I'd see kids walking along the shoulder of that road, and it was, to me, it was hideously dangerous. So, it started, we owned it with the idea that we would develop it eventually, but we were working with the Parks and Recs for a few years, trying to help them cure a problem so that the kids can walk there safely. So, part of our proposal is a walking path park. So, it expanded quite a bit. So, that'll be a pleasant pathway that will protect pedestrians, keep them completely away from the vehicle traffic, and also be more than just a sidewalk, it'll be a bit of a park. And that also interconnects with the city's future plan for a looped trail all the way from their river park, all the way around the city. So, it fits in their strategic plan as well. There's already walking paths on both sides of this property. So, one of the other things that we, besides multifamily lots, we're also proposing to develop a section that's 55 and older HOA, and it'll have a small park in the center that's exclusive for the use of the residents in the HOA. We found that that was something that was really lacking in Hermiston, was people that were mobility-challenged finding housing. Right now, so many of them have to move elsewhere to find that kind of housing. So, it was part of our plan to make those an integral part of this, so that you could have families living with someone that's mobility-challenged and be able to care for them. And anyway, we, we also are going to, on the north side, have some smaller lots that back up to the park. That'll be more, you know, a little more affordable, smaller scale housing, where they don't need a big yard. It'll be, because the view of the park will be right there. So, at any rate, that's a quick overview of our plans. So, if you have any questions?
Lloyd, a question on the, is that a, is that a new, a new street that would go between the two, the two parcels there? Or is that, the currently Townsend comes out, cuts over to Diagonal and then joins onto Elm. So, it looks like a new street coming south.
No, that's, that's existing. Everything that, all of the streets are existing. We will, at the, we will have two points of ingress and egress in the center, and our DOT study has been done, and that's what they suggested that we do. So, or that's basically the setback requirement. But there's, of the blue line there, all of that is existing road. And the DOT study showed that it was adequate to handle the traffic that would be added.
Record council, is this, is this not the thing we visited, the street we visited, 10th?
Yes.
The part he's referring to, that is now not terribly...
That is correct, yeah.
...good for walking.
No, well, it will now...
But where the open ditch is?
Yeah. So, Annette, we've worked with Annette at Hermiston Irrigation District on that project, and they have indicated a willingness to work with and use their crews to help change and mitigate that ditch, so that it makes the traffic work better. And the city had indicated, without promising, that, they had indicated that they would be, you know, an integral partner in doing that as well, so...
Well, at the time of our visit, Lloyd, I think it was referred to as a water feature.
Yes.
And I'm not sure that I agreed it was a water feature.
Yeah. Well, basically, it's, it's a drainage ditch, because there's a lot of springs on the top of that hill, and so it runs year-round. And so, if it were to remain open, it would be landscaped into an estuary park, so that it could, you know, have some value. But there was also some discussion of piping it. And so, that obviously will be up to the city engineers and, and you folks and Hermiston ditch. But burec and Annette at Hermiston Ditch were amenable to that idea of just enclosing it.
But I think it's our road, is it?
It's your road at this juncture, yeah.
Right.
So, at any rate, that's, and then the corner piece is the UEC, and I, they put in that power station there, so that they could feed the growth that they expected on, on the east side of town. And they've added a water, the city's added a water tower on the east side of town to prepare for the growth. So, the infrastructure is currently already there to serve the needs, and the city indicated that they had adequate services at the edge of our property for our development, so...
My question on the access, I think, I think the, the map there is a little bit old, as far as how it shows the streets going around.
We do not propose any access into this property from 10th Street. We just, we wanted to actually pull the traffic away from 10th Street was the idea, so that...
Off of Elm and Diagonal?
Yes.
So, this is, this would be a product, if you will, of the new water tower?
Yes. Well, actually, we're going to connect in, the water that we're going to be connected to is on the south side of the product, project. But, of course, they'll all be tied together.
I ask that because we're, we're cosponsors of the water tower, and...
Eventually, they'll...
Obviously interested in growth that comes as a result.
Well, they're, they'll all eventually be interconnected, but they have, without the water tower, they currently could serve us, so...
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Piercy. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to offer anybody who wants to speak in favor of this project to come to the microphone. Okay. Seeing none. Any in opposition? Now is your chance to come to the microphone as well. Okay. Again, seeing none. Just to go ahead and adjourn for that, right? Are we done with the hearing piece?
Yeah, in closing.
Yeah. Any further questions for the commissioners before closing, out of the hearing mode? You good?
Nope.
Okay. Let's go ahead and close out of the hearing mode and go back into general session.
I move for positive adoption.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Say aye. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Item number two, Motorcycle Hill Climb Event.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Teresa Smith. I represent Northwest Nitro Nationals and the Dry Creek Recreation Company of Washington, and my address is 509 South Johnson and Kennewick. I'm here to speak to you guys again. I came before you guys last year about an alternate location for the Motorcycle Hill Climb when Sunnyside was having a rezone issue going on, which has now, since been resolved. So, the Sunnyside event in Washington will continue. However, we were approached by the National Association to bring the hill climb back to Pendleton as an additional event for the association, to which would become round three in a five-part national series. So, we're, I believe you were presented with some information, a map of, proposed map for camping on the Whitney property. We have been working extensively with Jim Whitney on this project to bring back a quality event, and to, first year, we're hoping for 1,000 people. Next year, we're hoping to potentially double that. But we have space, as you can see, mapped out for just about 300 campsites on Jim Whitney's property, as well as spectator parking, a helipad, there is emergency service access, water truck, and then employee service areas and spectator areas in vendor row. Do you have any questions for me about the event, or?
Just, one of my questions is, I want to make sure that you have the contact information for the communications center, for the 911 center, and they have yours, in case they need to get hold of you for whatever reason.
Can I get that from Melinda, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
And then leave your number with them, so that, in case there's, that they needed to contact you, that they could...
Certainly, yeah. And I will be speaking with the fire department later on today.
I saw the fire department on here for medics, and you've, you met with Lifelight already as well?
Yeah, I've already reached out to Lifelight. They work with our Sunnyside event every single year. They were very excited to participate in this event as well.
You've planned for adequate facilities for the, for the people who come to attend and who camp there?
Yes.
As far as sanitary facilities and so on?
Yes. We'll be using Arnie's. I've spoken to him already about this. He provided the sanitary services for the previous hill climb that used to be held here. So, he's very familiar with the area and the layout, and he's, he's all in to come help us with that as well.
Is this anticipation here with the plan that you've laid out, is that, is that for more people, or about the same as, as was at the last event?
It would be about the same as what was at the last event initially. But we do hope to grow the event here. In our Washington event, it's a little bit different. We have a larger flat area, so I don't think that this event would grow to that size, whereas in Washington, our peak attendance would be about 9,000 people for the weekend.
I don't know if you remember, but Melinda personally represented us at the last event and came back with a very positive report.
Good. Well, we have been also working with the lumber mill up the road to get bark to put down for the camping areas, to, so that we can saturate the grounds and keep the dust down, and keep it a lot cleaner and more favorable for spectators and attendees.
No questions?
No questions?
Done.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah.
So move.
Got a motion approved in a second. Any further discussion?
Busters, other discussion?
No. All right. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Butler Grade Legalization.
Good morning. Matt Kenny, Yumitilla County Public Works Department Survey Supervisor. The Public Works Department's been looking for some time to legalize Butler Grade Road. There was a meeting that took place in December of 2018 with Next Era Energy, where they were looking at upgrading some of their windmill facilities. In that discussion was lengthening the blades of the windmill structures themselves. There's a buffer zone that's required for these, these blades. It's kind of a clear zone, so to speak. The physical location of Butler Grade Road actually got into the clear zone slightly. So, the, the goal was to pursue realignment of the road around the clear zone by purchase of adjoining properties and so forth. In order to do this, we needed to first establish the location of Butler Grade Road as it lies. Turns out that, like many roads in the county, this was one where the, the record right-of-way deviated from where the road is quite significantly. So, to accomplish this goal, we're pursuing legalization of the road. The area is about a half mile north of Ansickle, all the way north to State Line is the area we're looking to legalize. Doing this would satisfy this, this requirement, the buffer zone requirement, and allow Next Era to, to continue their pursuit. It's also in great benefit to the county and the adjoining owners to have that road right-of-way established legally. So, at this point, we're just looking to, to set a hearing date.
Do we have a date on the hearing?
April 15. Mr. Chair, I move that we set the hearing date for April 15 at 9 o'clock here in room 130.
Okay. Got a motion?
So move.
Look, did you make the motion? So, did you, was that a second?
I'll second it, yes.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Did you want to just pull up a stool or something, Tom? Looks like you're on the agenda for a while.
Maybe a throw-in chair.
You deserve this. Tom Fellowes, Public Works Director, Yumitilla County Public Works Department. So, what I have here before you right now is a request to purchase a vehicle from Surcross Properties down in Salem. This is a F-550. It's got about 75,000 miles on it. Appears to be in, in really good condition. We're going to use it. We, we want to replace one of our older fleet flatbeds with, for the crusher and bridge crew with, with this vehicle. And it, it will more than serve the purposes for what we're looking for. This is also on, on our request list from, that's been approved by the board for vehicles we're looking for.
So move.
Tom, is this a replacement vehicle or an additional one?
This is going to, this, this vehicle's going to replace one that we call TED.
Oh, yes.
Which is, we've, we've had for an awfully long time. And, and what we'll do with it is we'll pull the flatbed off, put it on this cabin chassis, and then, and then put that, put that vehicle in the auction.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Culvert Purchase.
So, at the beginning of the, the flood event in February, we looked at our, our culvert stockpile and decided that we wanted to ramp up our inventory a little bit. We were kind of assuming at that time that we were going to need a little more inventory of pipes. So, we went through, put a list of pipe together that we wanted to have on hand, and this is, this is what we ordered, was the $12,764.55 worth of culvert pipes, so that we can continue to move forward on our road repairs from this flood event.
Chair, move approval of the purchase.
Yeah, well, since I see my name on there, authorizing, I'll second that.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. What else we got for us? Greater Purchase?
Greater Purchase. As, as we've been moving forward through the year, we've been upgrading our, our entire fleet through purchases that, that were approved and authorized by the board. It's, it's time to upgrade one of our motor graders. This is just part of our continuing process to keep our, our greater fleet in a very well-maintained manner. This particular machine that we've got here is a John Deere 672G all-wheel-drive grader. It comes with a, on Sourcewell contract, which gives us a 42% discount off from the list price.
Sorry, did you say 42% discount?
Yeah. Forty percent discount, yes. That's part of the Sourcewell contract. The, at the end of five years, we have, providing the, the machine is still in, hasn't been wrecked or destroyed or anything like that, we have a guaranteed buyback of $200,000. So the purchase price of this machine, as, as we have it equipped, is $333,989.4. And at the end of five years, providing it, it meets all the requirements in the guaranteed buyback, then we're guaranteed to get $200,000 back out of that machine.
Big of a deal.
At the end of five years. So yes, to that, yes, it is a good deal. So we're, we're requesting approval to purchase this motor grader.
So move.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Rock, purchase, payment.
As part of the flood event up the Umatilla River, we were, we found ourselves in need of a huge quantity of material to fill what the river seemed to have washed away. We, Dana Menthorn made arrangements for us to get into an old quarry site up, up the river that was owned by Fred Turk. And this was all shot material years, from years ago. It had been walked away from years ago. We basically took, in round numbers, just short of 10,000 yards of material out of that, out of that quarry site. We, and, and he, he was asking $3 a yard for that material, which is, is a, a very reasonable rate for, for the type of material we were getting. So we've finished hauling from that site now, and we've got the bill before you for payment for that material.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. Would you like me to stand up here for a while longer, just to occupy your time?
Oh, we're good.
Someday we'll actually have a bronze statue, but that'll be in the future.
We should be more silent.
Ask for less money.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Sheriff Rowan, Sheriff's Office. Before you, as a request, many of you know that Captain Llewellyn is about to retire by the end of June. She'll be sorely missed, but, you know, we'll have to continue on. The request before you is to identify or get, obtain approval to identify someone ahead of time, so there's a, a good opportunity for transition, the new position with Kathy, some training opportunities there and whatnot, and get up to speed on some of the things and projects that she's involved in. And so this is just sort of accelerating approval for that position to begin May 1st, so we can have that time for training and transition.
I have a vague idea of what she does on a daily basis, and I think that's very prudent.
You want to make a motion?
I would love to make that motion. So I would move, move approval.
I'll second it.
Double second.
Okay, it's been moved in a second. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Laptop purchases.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sergeant Roberts with the Sheriff's Office. Coming before you today, request approval to move forward with the purchase of seven Dell Latitude 7490 laptop computers. If you recall, last year, we came forward to purchase several laptops to outfit our patrol vehicles. We were phasing out some of the old outdated tablets that we had. These seven units, if approved today, would go into the seven cars that we currently have on order, and they would phase out the remainder of the tablets, the aging tablets that we have that are, are currently failing. The Dell 7490 was identified by Umatilla County Computer Information Services as the, the best unit currently on sale to fit our needs. The total cost is $6,719.23. We'd like to take that out of our vehicle outfitting line item, which there's currently plenty of funding in for this purchase.
Any questions?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Dispatch recorder system.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Llewellyn, Umatilla County 911 Dispatch Manager. I'm here to request approval for a purchase of a recording system. We're current, we currently have a recording system, but we're getting a new radio system put in by the, the radio data district, and the system that we currently have will not work on the new radio system. So with the help of Doug Olson, I went out for a request for quotes and sent it to ten vendors and got four quotes back. I anticipated last year that we would be purchasing in the next fiscal year for this, but because the radio system project is moving faster, they want me to go ahead and, and purchase it now and get it onboard because we already have the dispatch consoles staged in the communications center, and they're waiting for me to get this purchase done. So I didn't have it in the budget this year, and I didn't put it in next year's budget because I knew I wouldn't have to get it done this year. So the lowest quote was $69,944. But that system does not connect up to the radio system the correct way. We wanted it to be recorded off the radio, recorder system and not off the consoles. And, and Sean said it wouldn't work, so we kind of kicked that quote out. And the next quote was a system that we really liked the proposal, and its total cost was But we'll be able to split that cost with Morrell County Dispatch because we'll be connected up to the corps at Umatilla County, and so they'll pay half of the system. So I'm requesting $42,249.79. We'll be purchasing off a GSA contract. So, and I do have some money in my contingency fund from the dispatch reserve account. I have $126,731 in contingencies, so I didn't know if I could use that or how we would pay for that. I didn't see Robert here, so.
Now, we have an equipment reserve fund also that's, is it available for this purpose?
Well, no, because I, well, I didn't put anything in that budget for it, but I do have money in there, but that's money that I'm saving up for the next server project. So I could take it out of there and then, but I'm going to have to, I, I don't know how I can build it back up fast enough for the next server project, which is in '22, so '22, '23.
Could they transfer that over?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
As the contingency, okay.
Well, this, this will be easy for the supervisors to make recordings and everything.
Yes, it's a lot easier than the current one that we have. And the, the cost of the maintenance fees is about $20,744, but we'll split that with Morrell County, too. We'll get the first year free, so, well, it's not free, it's part of the purchase price, but, but it's, it's a nice recording system. It's from Gulf Circle. They were the ones that, I bought my first recording system that was actually computerized, the TAC system that we had when we first moved out to the, the jail facility. So they're a good company, and, and they had a really nice quote and, and presentation, as you can see, that was attached to that, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval and moving forward with the dispatch recording system.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Septic inspection fees. He's been very patiently waiting back there.
Good morning. I'm Joe Fumara, Director for UCO Health. What we've got before you is to request approval to match what DEQ has already put forth regarding septic system fees for those impacted by the flooding events last month. What this allows for is any, any septic system that has, has previously been legally put into place and, and in use, any necessary permits from our office and land use compatibility statements required for any building repairs, replacements, replacements of septic system, all of that, that the permitting fees would be waived. That includes the surcharge fee that we send to DEQ, which they have already waived.
Do you want to make a motion on that?
Yes. Yes, so move.
Second.
I, I was thinking about the fact, I, I think it would be appropriate to have Joe remain a bit after the motion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure.
Okay, motions been made, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you say aye? I didn't hear you say aye.
I said aye.
Okay, just, can't remember your name. What was it again?
Joe, if you'd just stick around and tell, we have two more items.
Not a problem. Okay.
Tax appeal summary.
I guess so. On March 4, the BOPDA Board met and went over the tax appeals for 2019. They actually had, I think, about five cases actually heard, but the summary that they took on all their actions before the Board for approval.
Mr. Chair, move adoption of order BCC 2020-017.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, Westman, Umatilla Mosquito Control District Board Appointment.
This is before the Board for Approval for a reappointment of Marie Alvaldo to the Board of Trustees. Her term will be expiring, and the recommendation is to reappoint her.
On this one?
On this one?
Yeah.
So, Joe Fumara, Director of UCO Health, and also the current ex officio member on this Board. And Marie has been a very active participant in this, and so I just wanted to comment that since I was here. She's very active on this Board, and we are happy to have her there.
Thank you for that.
My personal knowledge of Marie is that she's active wherever she agrees to serve. She does a very good job.
This is true.
I would move approval of order BCC 2020-016.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Joe.
I, could I introduce that?
Please.
Okay, well, I, first of all, I think as a matter of record, the fact that we're currently dealing with COVID-19, it would be appropriate to get into the record a, a report from Joe on our current status, but also I have a couple of things to add after he gets done and something to point out, but without warning.
Sure. And, you know, it, it being a public meeting, you know, I, I can really only talk to what's, what's out there publicly. We still have one, one presumed case, and in fact, that case has, that case has been confirmed by CDC. We received information yesterday evening. So that, that is a set piece. Beyond that, we're still doing follow-up with individuals as needed and watching and monitoring and receiving calls and responding appropriately. But we are also trying to get some of our staff back to normal activities and try to pick up on some things that fell, fell to the wayside as we were responding.
Joe, that's one, one case in the county period. Is that, that's the one that has received the publicity? Is that correct?
Correct.
Could you reference your staff organization?
As, I mean, as far as...
In your response, not now, but, not where it is today, but how you were organized at the start. I think it's important for them, my fellow commissioners, to know what they, the kind of work they did and what they were into.
Sure. I mean, so as, as we kicked people up and started ramping up activities, you know, we, we stood up our IC system and, you know, we had between staff answering phones, fielding calls, you know, we had staff split up into three different teams as part of the ops team. We had doing investigation, doing screening, doing follow-up with people under monitoring. It was really a kind of an all-hands-on-deck, especially last week. The, you know, the, kind of the running comment in my office this week has been last week was a really, really long Monday because the days just bled one into, one into the other as we were just constantly being bombarded with information and trying to filter through that and get it out as appropriate as fast as we could when we knew it was accurate. And that, that has been a, a difficult thing, both for the public, I know, as well as our office, is the information on, on this particular virus is changing. It changes quickly, and it changes because it's brand-new to us. And as we learn more information, that informs our decisions. And as the guidance changes, that informs our decisions, and we're trying to kick that information out when it's available as fast as we can in a, in a manner that is as understandable as we can make it. I know there's been some, some concern from some in the public that there's a lot of double-talk and, and back-and-forth information, and it's really just that some of the information is changing. And we're making the, the best, you know, the best educated guesses that we can with the information we have and the guidance we're provided. But our sole aspect on this is public safety, as well as confidentiality of those who are being affected.
So have you, you know, I've, I've been kind of watching the national, what's going on around the nation with this. The city of, the city of New York, I believe, they, they have a National Guard is quarantining a certain section of the city.
I've heard that, yeah. So, I mean, every, there's, there's a lot of activity if you look in the news media itself. You can find one expert who says, you know, this is the pandemic to end all life, and others who say this is really nothing much more to worry about. Right now in Oregon, we kind of sit in that, in that latter camp where this is not an unserious event by any means. There's a significant portion of the population who are affected very severely by this, and it seems to be the elderly population. And those with, with, you know, who are highly susceptible have underlying health conditions. Beyond that, it's just very new, and even though people do have relatively minor symptoms majority of the time, they can still carry the virus, and that can then be transmitted to loved ones in the house or, or others who may be more susceptible to complications. And so we're, we're being very deliberate in our information. We, at this time, don't feel big gatherings need to be canceled. Information being provided, cover your cough, wash your hands, stay home when you're sick is information we've been saying for years in public health. That's not new information, and it still applies on this brand-new virus.
Yeah. My son got an email yesterday from a school saying that his spring break starts Friday after classes, and they say, all students off-campus by Sunday at 5:00 PM, and we're closing the school down for the remainder of the school year, and we'll, so now he has to come home and, and do it online, so, and...
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, thinking about how some of those things go is not, is not a bad idea, and I, and I can't promise we don't eventually end up in a scenario like that in Oregon. Thus far, we're not there, and, you know, we really don't want people to panic about it. The, the slow, the more slow this enters our communities, the better we will be able to respond to it. Some communities, and I know Washington being one, did not have the luxury of this kind of creeping in the way it, it has so far in Oregon, which, which has allowed us to not need to cancel a whole bunch of things at this point.
You said something the other day, and I can't remember how you said it, but, oh, okay, about the best thing about the Public Health Department is when you, nobody notices you're around or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, most, most of the work we do on a day-to-day basis is, is really not seen. not seen, you know, you know, using the American Health Program as, as an example, you know, in, in 2019, the, the three staff I have conducted, you know, approximately 1,500 inspections of various facilities. And most of that is not seen by anybody. What was not seen is there were no large food outbreaks tied to any of our restaurant facilities. And that doesn't just happen, I mean, that happens because the, the workers in those facilities are doing their best, and because we have staff helping to educate and, and provide guidance for them on that. And that's the way it works with a lot of our programs, is most of the work we do is seen by the individuals we're working with, and not by the broader, the broader public. And so in general, the less you hear from us is usually good things. You hear a lot from us when there's a big outbreak.
Saw a cartoon recently where the husband comes home and the house is a disaster, and he looks at his wife, he says, "Honey, what happened?" And she says, "You know, when you always ask me what I did today?" And he goes, "Yeah." And she goes, "I didn't do it today." Reminds me of that.
I was in, in Salem, Joe, as you know, and, and, you may not know, I, I spent time visiting with Dana Drum about the fact that the E-Board allocated $5 million on Monday. The federal government, I believe, has allocated $8.1 billion, of which a portion's destined for Oregon, but I think there's also additional resources that have come, that are, they're available in, in the state.
They are on their way. I am, I am participating in a meeting on Friday, talking about specifically how to decide how the funding is going to be, the, the funding allocated by the E-Board is going to be set up for the portion that is going to local public health, as far as how it's going to be decided on how it, how and who it goes out to across the state.
We've already spent quite a bit, and, and expended supplies, expended materials, expended staff time. Are you optimistic we'll get...
I am optimistic, I am optimistic we will get something. I, right now, I've, I've directed staff, end of day when the meeting got set, and this morning, we are compiling what we know, what we know now of what our expenses are, so I can have that information going into our meeting on Friday, so that there can be kind of a sense of what we have spent, and what it's looking like things will come down. Because the, the, the one piece about this is while we were one of the early counties to have a case, we, we are, we are not the last, and, and there will likely be additional cases across the state. And so health departments who have not yet had one, still have had some expenses and/or will likely have expenses in the future, and so it'll likely be a lively conversation, as it always is, when there is a relatively small pot of money to do a large job.
Joe, for those who are listening into this, or on tape, at a later point, the latest, greatest information is available on your website, is that correct?
So, the best source for this information is actually on OHA's website, on healthoregon/coronavirus. That is the compiled information across the state, kept up to date on, on a regular basis, that they're keeping that, and that includes our numbers as well. Most of the information we put out through our Facebook and our other sources, we're referencing that information, because as, as it gets into some of the specific information regarding the, the people under monitoring or investigation, we are trying not to identify numbers county by county for confidentiality reasons, and so we're really trying to reference state numbers when it comes to that.
Other questions, Joe?
I have no other questions.
Well, applause for your staff.
Yes, my staff have been amazing. I had full confidence going into this in them, but I was, you know, never, nevertheless amazed on a daily basis at what they've been able to do.
Coronavirus is not what they deal with on their normal day, is it?
So, yes and no. You know, a lot of this is what we do every day, this is just a bigger scale.
Yeah.
Well, as you indicated, as you indicated, most people don't know what you do day-to-day, and let us hope that by virtue of their work to date, they will quickly fade from the spotlight.
That would be the hope. Back to normal as soon as possible is always the goal.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for staying.
Okay, Commissioner Updates, Commissioner Elfring.
Well, it was a, it's been a long two or three weeks, with the flood that's come on us all, and the additional activity that that created, followed by the annual round of conferences that, that we've all attended, and I, I did attend before going to the Legislative Conference in Washington DC, did go to the CIS Board of Trustees, and the bite on our insurance program is going to be very, very mild. That's, that's always a good sign. This is the meeting when those are, those figures are announced. I'm sure we'll be hearing from our agent of record, Dick Ferranti, about those very soon, but it looks, looks very good. The committee meetings, I thought, were quite good at the Legislative Conference in, in Washington. Sorry, George had to return in a hurry to deal with the coronavirus.
I can only believe what you tell me.
But the, the meetings were, were good. The, the notable one that I can recall was the request by the City of Washington DC for, to be recognized as a state. My comment was, they came from a state, they should go back to a state if that's what they wish, rather than create a new one, and I said, "Why don't you, why don't you just annex back to, to the state of Maryland?" He said, "That's a good question." He said, "The real reason is Maryland doesn't want us." He says, "They don't, they don't want another dominant metropolitan area dictating to their state," and, and I had some, some empathy for that, for that point of view, so, but we did not give them statehood, did not approve the, taking that on as an issue. So, the speakers, General Powell did a very good job, spoke well, the President spoke well, our Secretary of, my, my mind goes blank.
Oh, Dr. Carson?
Yes, Dr. Carson, and Secretary Bernhardt of Interior, all spoke and, and brought their message, being very responsive. But I would have not wanted to be the speaker that followed the President, because immediately upon his conclusion, concluding his remarks, the room virtually emptied, and there might have been 35 people left to hear the next speaker. They all left.
Really?
Yes. And it was food and drug that was coming up, which I thought everyone would want to hear. I stayed, listened, so chalk one up for me.
Got it. Got one for you.
It's good to be back, good to, good to be back into, into the, if there is a normal situation, back into the normal situation.
Commissioner Murdock.
Well, I was sorry to have to come back, too, although the, one of my major reasons for going was because I had to make a presentation to the Immigration Task Force, in which I still was able to do before leaving, but then I wondered for a few minutes after I got back if it was really, had been necessary to do so, but that took about five minutes, and Joe and Alicia assured me that it, it was worthwhile, because they, they were a bit shorthanded.
Yeah, for sure.
I certainly made no medical contributions, but they did need somebody to, to be their public face, and so I did that, and, and they really did work very, very hard, and I hope, as I said earlier, that their results are going to pay off for them.
Yeah.
As a former school administrator, I was a little surprised, while we were down there to hear the announcement that Estacada schools were closing their school, shutting down because of the virus. I thought that was maybe a little, bit of a reach.
Well, bear in mind, we got a call from an employer in, in La Grande, who said that one of her employees was wishing to take sick leave because she had driven through Umatilla County the previous day, so there's all sorts of reactions.
There are.
For sure. Last night, we had probably 15 to 20 different agencies around the convention center, and offering services and help to people, the flood victims, and it was very well attended last night. Including by Mr. Elfring and Mr. Murdock.
We were both there, you didn't notice that, but we were...
But anyways, the people at the convention, we had plenty of opportunities to get help, and it was a very, a very informative night last night, and I want to thank all those, our partners who came in and, and offered assistance last night, so, and that is...
I, I also would like to thank you for stepping forward. There were some potential issues of racism surrounding coronavirus, and you stepped forward immediately to, to dispel that, and I appreciate the fact that you were on that side.
And, you know, and, and our Director, Joe, he was just speaking, and he did a phenomenal job. That story he did in EO really went, spoke a long ways to that, so, again, it just goes to the quality of our staff.
Yeah.
So, all right, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.